Ordinance number 2018-10, which was discussing the salary ranges for the Superior Officers Association and ordinance 2018-11, also discussing the salary ranges for the patrolman. There were some issues with regards to publication, so we were unable to adopt it tonight. However, it will be placed on the agenda for the December 4th meeting to be adopted. That's all I have. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Township Officers Committees, Reports, anything?
I just wanted to announce that there's a master plan public workshop that will be held Tuesday, November 27th, at Parsippany Hills High School Cafeteria. Again, that's seven, it's 7:00 to 9:00, and it's a roundtable for discussion about specific topics regarding the master plan.
Thank you. Okay, bids taken, October 4th, Yard Waste Transportation and Disposal Recycling, October 5th, Craftsman Farms Administration Building Rehabilitation, October 30th, WWTP Generator Improvements. To be taken, November 8th, Transportation and Disposal of Sewer Sludge Cake, November 20th, Invitation for Bids from New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, Licensed Electric Power Suppliers for Electric Generation Services. Quotations, Proposals, Qualifications.
Council President, before we start the public hearing, if we want to give a minute to anybody who would like to leave at this point, if anyone wants to leave, you go ahead and do so. I'm looking at the Board of Ed specifically. Okay, alright, so we're fine, so continue, okay.
Alright. Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Gwinyani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public.
If you do come up, please state your name, sign in. We'll give them five minutes.
I've been here a few times before about the Henry Street property, and we have a number of neighbors today in the council meeting, specifically about the presentation we saw last, during the last meeting. Just procedurally, I'm trying to understand if that project will require a council vote, or, because I saw them presenting in front of council, so it's a little confusing, because the previous, our impression was that that project will go straight into one of the boards, but it came to council for presentation, so I guess that's the question I want to start with.
Through you, Council President.
Sure.
It's my understanding that they are considering making application between, before the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
So, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board, okay, separate apart from the council. The only role that the council plays is appointing the members of the Board of Adjustment. So, if I could make a loose comparison, it would be quasi-judicial board, it's almost like a court, where you're asking for relief of the law to go against the zoning ordinances, and to make, the board will decide to make an exception on any of the relief that they're seeking from those ordinances. In that case, if they do make application before the Board of Adjustment, there'll be a 200-foot area around the property where they will have to notify any adjoining property owners of said hearing, so that any concerns or questions that you have about the project, that you're properly notified to be able to attend that meeting and ask those questions or express those concerns.
And I just want to verify, the presentation wasn't about so much the project, they were seeking funding, and one of the requirements that the county provides is that they just have a conversation in front of the council. So, there was no action required by the council, but they needed to have a conversation.
Doesn't the council provide the funding?
No, this was the county part.
Oh, the county part.
Yes.
Because after that presentation and hearing some of the residents, I have some concerns about the density of that project, and I would like further discussion on the density.
And that will be done at the Board of Adjustment?
No, I, I-
And I also did make the commitment-
I want council input on that.
Yes, and, and council, Mr. DePiero, I, I wanted to say that I, you asked me to speak with them, and I did. I've had a conversation, and I will be, before I leave, I will be meeting with them.
Meeting with who, the residents?
No, with the, with the, we talked about meeting with the Habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the density.
I, I, I would like the council, some of the council members that are also concerned, myself included-
Right.
-to be in on that discussion.
Okay.
Is there any way for all the residents to be a part of that discussion, or no? Because that's something we've been asking for since the beginning of the year, since we started seeing all the activities on the property, reached out a number of times, and I think I wrote that in an email to all of you, but haven't been able to get a meeting scheduled with council members or the mayor's office. So, I think that's, that's concerning. It took us very long time to just get the fact, facts out what was being built, and we had to, you know, contact Newbridge Services to get some, some of these information. So, we would like to be part of that conversation.
Sorry, just real quick, I had the opportunity to speak to yourself-
Yes.
...and a bunch of your other residents over there. So, I did listen to your concerns. I don't know if you did see, I don't, I know-
No, I definitely appreciate your, I also noticed on the, yes.
And on our last meeting, I know you guys weren't here and they were here.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, I made it perfectly clear where I stand on that.
Yes.
So, like I said, I don't know how much of an input, or Mr. DePiero had said and Ms. Sam, how much of an input we would have, Mr. Kazmark, but I can tell you, you know, I stated last meeting exactly what my opinion, I think it is too dense. I don't like it at all, I'll be flat out, I'll come right out and say it, I don't agree with it at all, so.
And I guess, this is not an official vote, but how does all the other council members feel? Because I heard the presentation, and 28 parking spots and a little one-way, you know, one-lane street, it's, and that, all the houses around it, they're all single-family residential properties. It, I've said this in the past, my conversation with Liz DeCoursey from-
Habitat.
-from Habitat, I think she made a comparison about comparing the house value for a condominium complex and appraisal for a single-family. I think we all know that that's not a fair comparison, and we don't do that comparison. I think our concern is putting a condo complex in all single-family neighborhood, we're reducing, significantly reducing the marketability of our properties. It's not about direct comparison of the value of the properties, but it's the marketability. So, anything other than a single-family house would not be, would not be ideal for, for that lot.
Well, the council's original intent on that property was a group home, which would be six classified people, either physically or mentally disabled, to be in a group home. That's what we funded, and that's what we approved. When, when that fell through, the council was no longer involved, and this, this, this plan, which is an attempt, all due respect to the administration, we spent a lot of money to purchase the property and to move forward with something, but I don't think this is it. I would personally prefer to turn down Habitat for Humanity on this project, and to leave the property vacant at this point in time until some group home is willing to talk to us about using that property for a group home.
Right, and I think in my email, we also made it clear with all the residents that I think we're okay with group home, we're all accepted. In fact, I built the house in 2016, 2017, with, knowing that there was a group home, a proposal for a group home, so it was fully accepted. And we welcome a group home or affordable housing, a single-family affordable house. So, I don't think it's, it's an issue about not having an affordable house in that property or a group home, it's about the density. I think you all made that very clear, that it's definitely about the density, so. Is there a way for us to get some input from mayor's office for the, this meeting, the proposed meeting with the Habitat?
Well, the administration has heard some of the council members, I think we, they need to go back and digest what the next step would be.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. What exactly is the council's role here? Can anyone, I mean, do we have any input to that?
I'm currently looking at that, there was a prior agreement between township and Newbridge that did contemplate a different project, so I'm currently taking a look at that agreement, and it may require council action in order for Habitat to move forward.
But my question is, if the zoning, it has to go before the zoning?
Well, there, wait, there are two parts, right?
Right.
There's a, there's a, there's a council part, and then there's a, there's a land-use part, that'll be before the zoning board.
Okay, so if the zoning board should approve it, then what's the council?
No, the chicken and the egg thing here.
Correct.
The Newbridge agreement was first.
That's correct.
So, when, when our township attorney looks at the Newbridge agreement, to change that agreement might require council approval, is what he's saying.
That's, that's correct.
Right, yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about the zoning.
What if it doesn't get our approval?
It doesn't get, it doesn't go to zoning.
There's no, there's no need to make a zoning application.
Right, wouldn't go to zoning.
Correct.
Okay, so they don't get the opportunity to, okay.
That depends on the agreement, of course.
That's right.
Right after Mr. Laun.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, and if there's any, any way we can do this meeting, Mr. Kazmark, since you've started your new hire for the town, if, if this is something you can set up for us, it would be great.
You got it.
And we can invite all the residents.
You got it.
Alright, thank you.
Not, just as a point, not to disparage the efforts of the administration on trying to utilize investment we had already put into the property, okay? They were trying to do, to utilize the investment we had already put into it. It's not what some of us want, you know, even though we're going to lose some of our investment-
Right.
-if we go back to the Newbridge issue, it still has to be compatible with the neighborhood, and I agree with the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Venezi of 102 Brook Lawn Drive.
If you could speak a little bit closer to the mic.
Pat Venezi of 102 Brook Lawn Drive. Under the Affordable Housing Law, 15 percent of the rental units being constructed at the District of 1515 are required to be affordable. The purpose of the payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as pilot agreement, that the council is considering tonight is to compensate the developer for lost income due to the construction costs and the reduced rents associated with these affordable housing units. After reading the pilot agreement thoroughly and understanding it as best as we can, we believe that this pilot actually overcompensates the developer at the expense of the taxpayers of Parsippany. Our concerns are, number one, Exhibit E lists the annual payments by the developer to Parsippany for all 30 years of the agreement. In our opinion, the numbers for the last five years are artificially inflated to the point of being deceptive. To boost the average 30-year payout and the grand total of all the payouts so that they seem more attractive to the township, the developer heavily backloads projections for the last five years by assuming totally unrealistic 50 percent increases in gross revenues, that is, 50 percent rent increases, in year '26, and then again in year '29. Number two, the amount of the tax break provided by the pilot seems excessive. If the market rate units, which comprise 85 percent of the project, were taxed in the conventional way, and the 15 percent affordable units were not taxed at all, Parsippany would receive over $3 million in taxes in year one. In contrast, Parsippany will only receive an estimated $1.1 million under the pilot. A tax abatement of $2 million a year for 30 years in compensation for 68 affordable units seems overly generous. The township needs to negotiate a better deal in this area. Three, Parsippany assumes excessive risk under the pilot, especially in the area of education costs. The pilot is based on a verbal projection of 20 to 25 students. Based on real-life experience from the 7,000 apartments that already exist in Parsippany, the District of 1515 is likely to produce 80 to 100 students. Given that the vast majority of District 1515 renters are expected to be millennials of childbearing age, and that 177 units in the development have either two or three bedrooms, an estimate of 80 to 100 students may actually be on the low side. If the developer's estimate is wrong and 80 to 100 is right, Parsippany will actually lose more money than it takes in under the pilot. Taxpayers need protection against the possibility of this scenario occurring. At a previous meeting, the council was receptive to including a clause that would shift the burden of paying for excessive students onto the developer. This clause needs to be included in the agreement before you sign it. Four, the housing trust fund contribution of $75,000 for affordable unit that Parsippany will receive in place of 34 units is inadequate. The going rate for a landlord agreement to convert an existing market apartment to an affordable one is also about $75,000. This figure was obtained by the business administrator from an expert who was involved in a similar transaction in Edison.
One minute.
Parsippany has nothing to gain by accepting $75,000 per unit and having to pay that same amount in a conversion agreement with a landlord. On the other hand, the $75,000 per unit contribution generates huge gains for the developer. The difference in rents between a two-bedroom market rate apartment and a two-bedroom affordable unit is $1,800 a month, see Exhibit 10.
Thirty seconds.
The present value of $1,800 a month for 30 years, assuming a 4 percent interest rate, is $375,000. So, the developer is paying Parsippany $75,000 for a transaction that is worth $375,000 to him. We have a problem with that, and so should you. Ask for at least $180,000 per unit. If that is not acceptable, have the developer physically construct the entire allotment of 68 affordable units. Bob will continue.
Did you have that timed perfectly right there? Sorry to do the tag team on you again, but it's necessary. Bob Venezi of 102 Brook Lawn Drive. Number five, hidden in the text of the pilot is a clause that allows any or all of the units in the District of 1515 to be sold as privately-owned condos. First of all, this clause allows a developer to circumvent the Affordable Housing Law. If the District of 1515 units were sold as individually-owned condos at the start, the affordable housing quota would have been 20 percent, instead of the 10 percent for rental units. More importantly, this arrangement deprives Parsippany of revenue that's, that it's entitled to. The pilot agreement specifies that the purchasing condo owner continues to be taxed at the lower pilot rate, rather than being taxed at the normal assessed rate. What's the rationale for applying pilot taxation to condo owners in this development, but not to any other single residential unit owners in town? Why should the District of 1515 condo owners pay less than half the taxes that the other residential owners pay? The pilot agreement should be changed so that any unit in the development that goes private should be taxed at the full market rate, just like everybody else. Number six, when the details of the pilot were presented to the public, it sounded like Parsippany was going to get 10 percent of the gross revenues from the project in taxes. According to the written agreement, the $450,000 annual payment for the redevelopment area bond is paid off first from the 10 percent of gross before Parsippany receives a dime. The net result is that the township receives considerably less than 10 percent of the gross revenues, and in effect, is, is paying for the bond. And we can use the $1 million, that minimum, that minimum annual payment to illustrate the problem. After the bond payment is taken out of the, of the $1 million minimum, Parsippany is left with $550,000 in tax. Revenue? Revenue. The amount is not much more than the pre-District 1515 amount of $420,000 that Parsippany collects today. We realize that the town and the developer have invested a lot of time and a lot of money in this project, and now want to complete the pilot agreement. Our goal is not to stop the project from being built, but just to make sure that Parsippany gets its fair share of the tax revenues under this pilot. As representatives of the taxpayers of Parsippany, the council cannot approve this pilot in its current form. At a minimum, the following three conditions need to be added or modified. None of them should be deal breakers. Number one, the developer must agree to paying an education cost tax surcharge for each student exceeding the projected maximum number of 25. The cost per student listed in the New Jersey Department of Education, or by the New Jersey Department of Education for the most recent school year, which is currently listed at $22,000, should be used in the calculation. Number two, the housing trust fund contribution amount of $75,000 per unit should be increased to at least $180,000. If the developer does not agree to a number in this neighborhood, take the contributions completely off the table and have the developer physically build all 68 affordable units. And lastly, insist upon that upon sale of a rental unit into a privately-owned unit, the owner should be assessed taxes on the same basis as every other residential unit in the township. Thank you. Thank you. [applause]
William Lavista, 770 Park Road. I just want to express gratitude for the council for reconsidering the Project 9 John Street. I mean, we've lost so much open space in that area. We've had three or four major housing developments, we've had two schools included. Right now, Canterbury Estates is my primary annoyance. We have blasting, rock crushing, basically quarry operations with caravans of dump trucks going up and down Park Road. There's, how can you have blasting in the middle of a residential area? I don't understand how it got approved way back when, but it's still continuing. I think it's been going on for about 18 years. We've lost property, hundreds of thousands of trees over by the water tower, they, they planted ball fields there. We've, we've lost so much open space, it's incredible. I really want to, I express the gratitude to the council for consideration of the density of, of the project, so, thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Hold on a second.
No, no.
Okay, Dave Hutchinson, 811 Park Road, also here about the Henry Street project. I'm glad that you're considering taking a look at that. We have kids in the school, too. Mount Tabor has become one of the biggest schools in the district. Any opportunity, any possibility of adding even kids to that school with a project of this size, I think would be concerning, too. So, I hope that you, you know, continue to consider whether a project of that density is the right fit for that, that property. We bought three years ago, and we were also in the understanding that was going to be a group home, which we also were pleased to see and happy about, seemed to fit if it's a single-family property. So, again, please consider that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Allison Cogan, and I am speaking just as a member of the public and a member of this town, and in my personal experience, I have found Bob Venezi is, really does his homework and really understands what he's talking about, so I would highly, would like you to highly consider the information he has given you that is very relevant and something that you definitely need to consider. Thank you.
Oh, can you just state your address, too, for us?
Allison, Allison Cogan, 4 Faber Road in Parsippany.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, sir, you already, you're-
I just want to speak for the 1515 project.
No, yeah, we can't, you, you've used up your time, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public-
I've gotten up here before and talked to you about that 9 Henry Street proposal. I just want to say that we are a diverse neighborhood. We, we don't just have Christmas lights and Hanukkah lights, we also have Diwali lights in Parsippany, and we are a diverse, strong neighborhood. We are all on beautiful properties, beautiful houses, not expensive ones, but good enough, and to drop this egregious condominium project right in the midst of us is a gross violation of any kind of zoning law that any community should hold as a standard. I want to thank you for all the help you will be giving us, because it looks, it looks like an uphill battle at this point. I don't know where the momentum comes from, but it seems to be there, and we're going to need all of you to understand that we're a large rainbow community in the middle of Parsippany who needs each and every one of your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else before I? All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public-
Hold on.
This is the first meeting I've been at that the mayor has been at, so I have a question to the mayor. Do you know Matt Clarkin?
Yes.
Is that your only question, or?
Is that it?
Well, we, normally, our procedure is you ask all your questions, and we'll answer them at the end, so we don't take up your time.
Well, my statement is, I called your office numerous times all spring, asking about the Henry Street property. Never got a straight answer, always was told something is happening, but no, nothing has been signed yet. We didn't even know who. I said to a lady, I said, "So, they're selling it to a developer, he's going to put houses in there." Well, that's all I can say. That's what I was told. I don't, all right, take a few steps forward on that. I contacted Matt, and this is an email from him on June 29th. "Hi, Bob, we are currently awaiting an update on the talks between Newbridge and Habitat, which we anticipate receiving on Monday. We will be able to call you with more update information on that date. I hope you will enjoy your weekend." That was the first and only time we were ever told that it was being sold to Habitat for Humanity. I'm still waiting for that phone call. Okay, from June 29th. "Mrs. Sandman, I watched the video of the last council meeting. You kind of made a joke that I suggested it be a bird sanctuary." I didn't make, state that in an email as a joke. I threw that out there as an alternative.
I, I don't think I was making, well, you finish your statements.
It's an alternative if the town wants to get out of this somehow. I also asked the direct question is, the deed was changed behind closed doors. What can we do now to re-change the deed behind closed doors? And I'll leave that as a question.
I don't understand the reference that a deed was changed behind closed doors. The deed has always provided that the property is restricted for affordable housing use. That occurred when Newbridge bought the property.
Right. Was not.
Then it was changed. When Newbridge bought the property, it was changed.
Newbridge bought the property with the assistance of the township.
But what I'm saying is, nobody in the neighborhood was notified that that deed was going to be changed to affordable housing.
The acquisition was funded pursuant to the township's Affordable Housing Spending Plan. That was noticed to the public.
That was noticed to the public?
Absolutely. That occurred years ago.
Well, I understand. I understand. It's years ago. We're just finding that out now, but I am, I am understanding that. But my question is, when you say it was notified to the public, I wasn't notified.
It was action of the council. It was, it was approved by resolution.
And this is years ago.
Now, Mr. Lot, you're talking about the Newbridge Agreement.
That's correct.
Okay. The Newbridge Agreement was an agreement that the council made and funded with Newbridge. The council has not been involved in any, any agreement between Newbridge and Habitat for Humanity. We have not been a part of any agreement.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and neither have the residents been involved in any, anything that, that switched from Newbridge to Habitat for Humanity. And that's all he's saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, well, what can the town of Parsippany, you people, us as residents, what can we do to change this deed so it's not for affordable housing only?
Well, if you listened to the, to the discussion before, our township attorney is going to look at the council's agreement with Newbridge and, and see if there was validity in them selling our contract with them to Habitat for Humanity. Township attorney's, it's in, the ball is in his park right now to tell us what our next step will be.
Okay, I'm sorry. I did come in late. If I missed that, I apologize for that. The one last thing I would like to say to you is, two months ago, you stated that all the townhouses, group homes that you know affected the community positively.
True.
This will not affect our neighborhood positively.
All right, now you're talking about the Habitat project.
Habitat, what they're trying to do. Okay.
I agree.
You take houses that are being put up for sale that need work, okay? You go in and you fix them up. They help the community. This destroying a wooded property that's surrounded by 10 houses is not going to affect positively our neighborhood. Obviously, you all know that at this point in time. We've stated it enough. So, thank you.
I, I just want to go on record as saying, when this did take place, it took place really a while ago because it was pre, even, you know, four and a half, five, six years ago. I don't know if you recall, Mike, when that Habitat agreement was done, possibly, but, but it was not done, it was not done behind closed doors. And I never.
But I assumed another, another group home would go there. I did not know it was going to be.
Yeah, but that's not what we're referring to. Yeah, no, we're not, I'm not referring to what could go there, not go there. What I'm saying is, you have to stand and say, or I do, I, I wouldn't be part of something that, this council would not be part of something that wasn't public. So, maybe when I was saying about the bird sanctuary, I was saying in deference to how you wrote that, you know, you did it behind closed doors. We can undo it behind closed doors. You know, it, it, it got, it was a moral, it hit my moral bone.
Yeah, that has a negative connotation, which is out of order.
Yeah. So, I, so what I'm saying is, you know, yeah, that was not done behind closed doors.
It's not 1922, okay, where everywhere you look, there's open space, okay? People with houses that back up to woods, their house is worth more than the person who doesn't have a woods against their house. That's just the way it is in 1928.
And everything you're saying, we're not, we're not saying we're, we don't understand or we, we comprehend, but it needs to go on record that this community, these elected officials that are here now, were there in the past, did not do it behind closed doors. I just wanted to say that because I felt that it was important to say that.
I lived there 29 years and I didn't know what was happening. That.
But maybe you missed the notice. I mean, it had to be public notice back.
Public notice in the, in the newspaper? Those, those six pages that have a gazillion lines of, of stuff that's legalized jumbo that nobody on the face of the earth reads?
All right.
All right. Got it.
Hi, Isabel Alfano, 8 New England Drive. I just wanted to say that on Lincoln Avenue, my daughter goes to Lake Hiawatha School. And the beginning of the year, we had an open school night and I realized that there was 26 students to one teacher. And I had mentioned to the teacher that it just seemed a great deal of students for one teacher to handle. And just recently, she received an aid, so I think that's wonderful. But there's construction going on on Lincoln Avenue, and I don't know if you've ever tried to go and come in during rush hour in that street, but it's a nightmare. There's no way that that two-way traffic can be managed. And I don't know what's being built there, but if there's additional housing and more students coming into that school, I just feel that there's, needs to be grades added to each class because the resources are there. I think that that has to be really thought about once we start approving for these properties to be brought off and more families being added into the community. Another place that I find really congested is, I live on New England Drive. I drive up to North, to Knoll Road. Just to make a left or a right there in the morning is a nightmare. I don't know how many more people have been added into this community, but it just seems like there's a lot of traffic everywhere. Trying to get to and from school, trying to get to and from Route 46, trying to go through that. Even through the side streets, there's congestion. I just don't know where all these people are coming from.
Mr. Council President?
May I comment on that?
Sure.
I'm going to need you. Yeah. No, 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 no. Listen, I, I'm going to need you. We have a, we're going to kick off the master plan on the 27th. And traffic is certainly one of my huge concerns. And I'm going to need the community there to tell us what it is that you want to see and where it is you want to go. So, please. I, I, believe me, I understand.
Talk from out there, so. No, I was going to say, she can't talk from back there with a couple mics.
At the high school. Hills High School. It's, it's public notice. It's on the website. It's on Facebook. We even have it posted outside Town Hall. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiro. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, Mr. DePiro?
Ordinance 2018:27, an ordinance establishing salary ranges for the police chief of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 20th, 2018. And that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Ordinance 2018:28, an ordinance of the township, the council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 290 Parks, Recreation Areas, Public Lands, Article 1 Motor Vehicles Fees, Section 290-4, Knoll Country Club Utility Fees, and Chapter A 445 Fees, compilation, Section A 445-37, Knoll Country Club Utility of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills on November 20th, 2018, and that that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2018:29, ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with the District of 1515 Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as Block 200, Lot 1.2. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 20th, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Before I motion this, just to clarify, this is the pilot agreement.
That's correct.
Okay. As I'm reading this aloud, it says we're going to read this again and the public, again, will have the opportunity to be heard.
That's correct. There'll be a public hearing.
Okay, so at this time, before I make this motion, can I ask two questions? The first is, can somebody, maybe, Mr. Hanley, can you address Mr. Venetia's concerns point by point and explain why we cannot accommodate what he is asking as it pertains to the number of children and shifting the burden of extending beyond what's projected to the developer? And, I mean, Mr. Venetia has clearly done his homework and his points seem valid to me. So, I'd like to hear why we cannot take the time to address them.
Mike Hanley, NW Financial Group. The context of this whole transaction is, you know, after many, many months of negotiating with the redeveloper, the town got millions of dollars of concessions from the redeveloper. And this is the very best deal we believe the town can negotiate across the many things that we got. And that there are not additional financial concessions to be made here. This was, is the kind of worst deal the redeveloper can do for themselves and still have it be financeable. Now, the schoolchildren issue, I don't agree with the idea that there can be 80 or 100 schoolchildren coming out of this project. To compare this project and very small studio and one-bedroom units to older apartments that have large two-bedroom units, it's a bad comparison. Rutgers has studied thousands of units around the state and published their findings. And you get a very different number of children from different types of units.
So, let me stop you right there. If that's the case,
Yes.
then why not agree to the burden being shifted to the developer?
It's a financeability issue. I mean, it's a.
But if it's not going to happen, then it shouldn't be an issue.
But developers, the banks that finance developers don't take kind of open-ended risks that can come to any possible result. It's not what they do as a practice. It's, I agree. I mean, I don't think, and I, I think even probably the developer would agree that the, it's not a unmanageable risk because you're very unlike, you know, there's no reason to believe that this project would behave differently from all the other projects in the state that are similar. But you have to get financing. Without financing, you can't build, and that's not a risk that banks take.
But you can understand the frustration in the room that that is the position in which we find ourselves.
I, yeah, I mean, there are a lot, you would like to have, always do deals with no risk to you and lots of risk on the other side, but that's not, those aren't deals that happen. As an example, you know, you probably don't have another project in the town that's waiving their Kelly Act rights and going to take care of their own snow and, and snow removal and solid waste and things like that, right? That you don't have a town that's doing infrastructure improvements and making them, a portion of them done with prevailing wage. You don't have other projects that are making a $3 million payment to your COA fund. So, and you can isolate any point and say, "We must have this one point," but it, it kind of undermines the very long and hard negotiation that this administration did to get the best deal that was possible for the town in the context of having a building that's underutilized, a, you know, continually decreasing ratable, a serious COA obligation that has to be managed and dealt with. And, you know, complicated transactions have things that you like about them and things that you don't like about them. And, you know, it, it's, it's not, you're not going to get the deal that you want to be perfect.
Mr. Hanley, you mentioned, excuse me, Mr. Hanley, you mentioned the Kelly Act. I was, I had referenced, Mr. Lot, this afternoon in regard to the designated roads. And, Mr. Lot implied that the roads that you are referring to with the garbage removal and the snow removal and so forth and so on are within the development. I'm asking what of the roads in the rear and the side of the property? I have a map that says that they are going to be designated to the township of Parsippany. Is the entity still going to take care of those roads? And Parsippany will not be held accountable to clean the roads during the snow or whatever?
Yes, that's the agreement.
That's the agreement. Okay. And also, didn't you, didn't your, didn't the entity recently come to an agreement with Mr. Lot's help in regard to if any of the units become condominium units, then they will be, this agreement shall revert to the legality applicable to real estate taxes. If, if the apartments are changed to condos.
Yes, that's correct.
Then we will have that option.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Lott, thank you, Mr. Hanley, I appreciate it, and I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just let me, does that extend to the retail portion?
It does.
Oh, the retail portion is sold as well?
Mr. DePiro and I, over the weekend, talked about that, and I was able to reach the Developers Council yesterday.
I'll be explaining that in my statement when I get a chance to talk.
Can I, you just?
So, it'll cover both the residential dwelling units as well as the retail space.
So, what does that mean? This means the entire retail complex, individual retail?
Right, so, with respect to the residential, it'll be the individual apartment units, and then with respect to the commercial retail space, it'll be the individual retail units.
So, in effect, that nullifies the pilot on the retail?
Correct.
Yeah.
In the event that they're sold individually as condos?
Individually.
Correct. Right. So, the intent here, just so we're clear, is to make sure that we don't have owner-occupied dwelling spaces or retail spaces. But the project, by its nature, is a condominium project. There will be a commercial landlord, and there will be a residential landlord.
But if, if I understood the email that you sent us, if this does occur, the bonds from the RAB will be repaid, the agreement will be terminated, land and improvements subject to this agreement shall revert to legally applicable real estate taxes.
Yes.
So, I think that's, I think that's in our benefit if this should ever pass.
Yeah, but 177 units, that was pointed out, 150 of those are two-bedroom at market rate, 19 are affordable housing two-bedroom, there's eight three-bedroom. So, that's like 177 units that have the potential for school-aged children.
But, you have to, I'm separating the market units from the affordable units, because the affordable units have to be placed somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Whether it's on this site or on another site.
Right. So, what you're saying about the affordable housing units is they are not included in this 2025 because that's a function of the municipality with their COA agreement?
That's right.
Okay, and that's what I understood. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, correct.
So, they're exempt really from sort of this 2025?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, Mr. Lott, could you lay out what are the legal and developmental consequences if this should not pass?
Well, some of that touches on the township's current litigation involving affordable housing, so I would prefer not to get into any details with respect to where we currently stand with our affordable housing litigation. But a failure of the project would have adverse consequences for us in our currently pending marital litigation, because the project was identified by prior administration as one of the cornerstones of our affordable housing plan.
So, go ahead. So, in simple language, we're possibly talking about a lawsuit?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you will affect your affordable housing number?
Potential.
And that lawsuit potentially would have the COA obligation on the side of the builder in that lawsuit?
That's correct.
Okay. Everybody satisfied so far? Motion to approve the above resolution.
Mr. Hanley, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley.
We have a motion by Ms. Peterson. Need a second?
Second, Grignani.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Okay, my turn. Brief statement I'd like to read first. We have spent a lot of time on this project. I think that this project could be good for Parsippany, but I was not totally comfortable with the pilot. Even though there is no intent to convert the apartments or commercial units into condos at this time, the pilot could hinder our ability to collect taxes in that eventuality. To protect the township, I requested that wording be added to the agreement that if any portion of the entity, residential or commercial, is sold, then the pilot is broken, and these units would be assessed and taxed at fair market value. Our township attorney has assured me that Article 9, Paragraph 1G, covers my concern, and therefore, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. DePiro. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
You know, I believe that this is a great concept, forward-looking development with several benefits. However, I don't feel that enough time was devoted to understanding the terms and the projected cost of this project, and given the scope of the project, I think it deserves more, a more thorough discussion and review to make an informed decision. I don't feel that I have all the information I need to make a decision on that, a comfortable decision on that, and I'd recommend in the future that the council, you know, try to keep the council a little apprised of any major negotiations like this, because this was a very complex agreement. I don't think it's easily understood. So, you know, I vote no.
Ms. Peterson?
I would second what Councilmember McCarthy has stated and say that we inherited this, this is taking on the racehorse on the third turn, so, I have sought counsel and information from as many people as I saw humanly possible and reasonable, and this is an incredibly challenging decision, because I think it will set a lot of precedent in motion. But that being said, I think that the benefit at this point outweighs the risk that will be triggered, I think, immediately should this project fail. So, while I agree with Mrs. McCarthy on her hesitations, and I think that they are sound and accurate, I, I think that in order to move us beyond this so that we can begin to focus on best practices in the future, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Carriffi?
Okay, before I vote, you know, when this project was first discussed, there was no mention of a pilot. You know, and it was something said earlier tonight where it referenced the risk, that the developer didn't want to take the risk, and I heard some mumblings in the audience, and I said the same thing to myself at the same time, so you want us to take the risk? I don't think the town should take the risk. I think this project could be something that could be good, you know, down the road for the town. I just don't, I just don't like the pilot program, the way it stands right now. I think, you know, Mr. Venezia brings up some good points. I don't think the town is going to get the full benefit out of this that we should, and where we could get the most ratable that we could, and I just think that we're giving up too much with the way the agreement is, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay, so, just going to go over the votes very quick for clarification of the record. We had a motion by Ms. Peterson, a second by Ms. Grignani. Mr. DePiro voted yes, Ms. Grignani voted yes, Ms. McCarthy voted no, Ms. Peterson voted yes, and Mr. Carriffi voted no. The motion passes, three yes votes to two no votes.
However, the second reading will require four votes, or the motion is?
No.
No, that's not true.
No. Three votes.
Three votes will pass that, too?
Yes.
On an ordinance?
Yeah, only the bond ordinances would require four.
Oh.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Ordinance 2018:30, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, amending the redevelopment plan for property identified as Block 20, Lot 1.2, and located at 1515 Route 10 in the township, and referring said amendment to the Planning Board for review and comment in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48:12A-1, ETS-EQ. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 20, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 18, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.